Hey everybody, I'm Rob Clark and this is an educational video about pythons. The video is meant for people who make laws, people who make regulations. These people include lawmakers such as city councilmen, county commissioners, state legislators, and perhaps even members of US Congress. If you know any of these people, feel free to send them a copy of the link. Maybe they will find this video helpful and maybe they will feel free to contact me if they have any questions. And if you are a member of Congress, or a city council, or a county commissioner, or state legislator, please feel free to contact me and please, please, please pay close attention to this video. I hope that you find it helpful in your decision-making and I do ask professionally and politely that you please consider our perspective as snake owners, as python breeders, and that you refrain from regulating these animals any further. Hopefully throughout the video, after watching it and considering everything carefully, you'll understand why. Now you may be wondering, what are my motivations for creating this video and what do I have to gain? So, you know, that's a fair question because my motives may cause you to question the legitimacy of the information that I'm providing. Well, I'm still being as factual as possible, but yes, I do have a small financial interest in producing this video and putting this information out there. This is full disclosure. As far as the Raleigh-Wake County area is concerned, I may sell between three, four, or five animals there a year. That's not a lot and certainly the revenue generated from those sales would potentially be well under a thousand dollars. So it's negligible, it's not of a, you know, a large concern. However, looking at the big picture, I see Raleigh-Wake County areas as being ground zero for a lot of the new legislation and a lot of the new movement to ban certain animals. So, looking at the bigger picture, you guys in that area are ground zero and that's the epicenter for the Gifford Incident. So, my concern, my fear is that you may set a trend, you know, based on one bad incident, set a precedent, establish bad laws, and create momentum for other areas to follow suit. I don't have a huge financial interest in the Wake County-Raleigh area, but looking at the bigger picture, uh, yeah, there's a huge interest there. Statewide, I make a lot more sales and then if you look at the national picture, um, there are a lot of big breeders in the python community that make a living. And if you guys are wondering, I do have a full-time job, won't get into that, but eventually I'll retire and the plan is to, uh, for me to have a large-scale commercial breeding facility open to the public, fully licensed, generating sales tax, income tax, hiring employees, um, and really benefiting the community in a way that goes above and beyond just having a few animals. So, for those of you in the North Carolina region that are considering these rules, these bans, these laws, uh, if you're familiar, there used to be a Cape Fear Serpentarium in Wilmington, North Carolina. The owner passed away, he was shot and killed, and that's a business that I would like to copy or emulate so that I can fill that niche, fill that void that was left here when that business failed after the owner was killed. It was a tourist attraction and for the Wilmington area, it brought in a lot of money. It helped support tourism to the area. So, that is something that I want to do for the state. Um, and also if you guys aren't aware, North Carolina is a huge reptile industry state. We have several major reptile enclosure building businesses here that are in North Carolina. We also have a lot of large-scale breeding operations for different reptiles in North Carolina. And these people combined are bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars to this state annually. So, if there are bans that take place, it's, it's gonna hurt the tax base, it's gonna hurt the community with jobs and things of that nature. Um, you know, is it on a scale that would be Fortune 500 type stuff? No, obviously not. But, I don't wanna see that stuff fail. I don't wanna see these people lose jobs. I want to help these people, I want to help myself create a business that would be able to hire people. So, that's my interest in this, full disclosure, but I don't let my interest cause me to change the facts. So, everything that I'm saying in this video is factual, take it or leave it, like it or love it or hate it. I'm not gonna change the facts to manipulate the system, it is what it is. So, the background to this video and the reason I'm making it is that, as many of you are aware, there was an incident in Raleigh, North Carolina where a young man by the name of Chris or Christopher Gifford had a collection of venomous snakes. And one of his spitting cobras, um, a zebra cobra from Africa, had escaped and was located in the neighborhood on somebody's porch and this drew a lot of publicity, a lot of negative publicity. So, in light of that, the question has been asked, should people own certain animals to include venomous snakes? But obviously while lawmakers are considering this, they have to explore other options and they put basically all animals or most animals on the table for consideration. So, in light of this, I've been asked by a city councilman to produce this video to help educate him and his fellow council members in their decision-making and I hope that this video will be useful to other people who hold similar offices in their decision-making as well. It's understandable that a lot of people in these positions don't have firsthand knowledge, they don't have experience with these animals. And so, the purpose of this video is to shed some light on the hobby, to shed some light on the industry, and to help illustrate the safety of these animals, that they're not as threatening or as dangerous as the public may perceive. So, as you watch this, please keep an open mind, but that's the background to the situation. Um, now, there are other jurisdictions and other places that are considering legislations outside of Wake County, outside of Raleigh, outside of North Carolina. The information that I'm putting forward in this video is going to be useful in all jurisdictions and all areas. Now, one question you may ask is, why should you listen to me? What are my qualifications to educate anyone on this subject? Well, for starters, I've been involved in the reptile community primarily with pythons since 1994, when I was a teenager and acquired my first snake. So, in all those years, 27 years now if my math is correct, I've never had an escape incident, I've never had a serious bite incident, there's never been a death of a person or a child or domestic pet. So, that's a very good, very successful track record as both a hobby keeper and a breeder. It's, uh, not the easiest thing in the world to accomplish that sort of track record. I take it very seriously, I'm very cautious, I am very responsible with all of my animals, and I obey the laws. So, all of that combined gives me an excellent track record. Um, I do not have a college degree in herpetology, however, for what it's worth, I do have an associate's degree, I do have a bachelor's degree, I do have master's credits in a program that I attended from NC State University. So, in considering the level of experience I have, yes, I am educated, yes, I do have a knowledge base and a foundation to be able to speak to you, to be able to educate you. But, when you're considering who you listen to and you're considering your sources, consider the fact that there are a lot of people out there with masters and doctorate degrees that have very little firsthand, one-on-one interaction with venomous snakes and with large pythons or constrictors. They may have a lot of book intelligence and they may have a plaque or a degree hanging on the wall, but they don't do what I do and some of them can't. Not saying that it's that difficult, but my level of knowledge is demonstrated by my level of success. I'm able to take a python and from a size similar to this, raise it up to a full-grown adult that weighs over a hundred pounds, and I'm able to keep that animal alive, happy and healthy, and I'm able to keep that animal safe, and I'm able to keep the public safe. And I'm able to raise that animal to adulthood in an environment, in conditions that it feels happy in, and breeds and reproduces. And so, this is what I do as a hobby and I enjoy it. There are a lot of other breeders out there and unfortunately, yes, there may be a few out there that are irresponsible, but we'll get into that. Right now, we're just talking about my qualifications, my experience, and why it is you should listen to me and what I have to say on the matter. Now, you may be asking yourself a couple of questions. One of those questions might be, why does anybody wanna own a python? Why does anybody want to own a snake? And I can only talk about pythons, that's where my expertise and experience lies. I don't know much about cobras and other venomous animals, but I will say that as an owner of pythons, I can relate to how they feel and I do think and believe that they should be allowed to own those animals because I believe and support individual animal ownership rights. But, regarding pythons and why people would want to own them, I don't think that's really a question you should ask yourself. I don't think that's a relevant question when you're determining making laws, when you're trying to figure out how to regulate something. I believe the questions you should ask yourself are, why would animals need to be regulated? And there's really only two questions that apply. One question or concern would be safety, public safety, animal safety, the individual owner's safety. And I say this, if the individual owner wants to take certain risks, that should be up to the individual owner. However, public safety is always a concern and there are already laws on the books in North Carolina at least, in Article 55, that regulates certain ways animals are kept and how they're kept, how they're transported, how they're labeled. And I'll be the first to say, those laws are sufficient. And if those laws are sufficient, if followed, then they shouldn't, there shouldn't be a need to further regulate these animals or restrict them from being owned or possessed within municipalities or within individual counties. The laws work and the laws work if they're followed. However, if somebody's willing to break those laws, they're still gonna break laws that say they can't own the animals, so they're still gonna possess them. But concerning public safety, we'll get into that more with holding the animals and demonstrating safety. And as you can see, I'm holding an animal right now that is not threatening me, this animal is not biting me, and I will further demonstrate this with other animals much, much bigger than this. But, eh, at the start of this video, this is sort of an introductory, this is a small python and as the video progresses, we will demonstrate and discuss larger and larger pythons. The other concern that you probably have is environmental safety. I can say that North Carolina is not hospitable, does not have a hospitable environment for these animals, for pythons. And again, I focus on pythons, that's where my expertise is. Pythons will die here in the wintertime, probably six, five to six months out of the year, it is cold enough to kill off every single python that could ever be released or get loose into the wild. So, environmental concerns really shouldn't apply. Even in the most southeastern part of North Carolina where it is the warmest weather, the most tropical climate, these animals will die in the wild. They cannot survive here, they cannot breed here, there's absolutely zero concern for these animals to repopulate the area and to reproduce and become an invasive species. Now, if you live in other areas of the country, there are only two states in the United States where I believe it's possible for pythons such as this to survive in the wild. That would be Hawaii, which has one of the most tropical climates in the country year round and is most similar to where these animals are originally from in the wild, which this particular species does come from the Philippines, Sumatra, Malaysia, and areas such as that. Uh, so Hawaii is relatively close, even though there's a lot of water in between, um, it's highly unlikely these animals would ever naturally migrate to Hawaii. The other area would be South Florida. South Florida is very, very tropical, but even if you check the temperatures in northern Florida, it gets too cold there for these animals to survive, even in northern Florida. They do occasionally see freezing temperatures in northern Florida and throughout the entire state of Georgia and throughout all of the different Gulf Coast states. It would be almost impossible for one of these pythons to survive a cold snap. How do I know this? Well, since 1994, my experience tells me, in keeping these animals, that to maintain their health and keep them alive, they need to be maintained at a temperature of at least high seventies every single minute of every single day. If they do see temperatures dip below the high seventies for upwards of a few hours, they can easily start to develop infections in their lungs and upper airways. If their temperatures drop into the sixties or fifties, their metabolism gets so low, their heart rate gets so low that their brain starts to get deprived of oxygen. And if that animal is not warmed up soon, it will die. So, if you look at temperatures in different environments in different states and you ask yourself, how often do these areas see temperatures in the fifties? It's often, it's very often, and these animals could not survive two or three days of temperatures being in the fifties, let alone the nighttime temperatures which commonly drop into the forties. So, the point I'm making about temperatures and environmental concerns is that in North Carolina especially, we don't have that concern. In Florida, these animals are already regulated and banned and it's a shame, but I do understand their environmental concerns there. Hawaii, I believe, has some stringent laws too. Um, I'm not 100% familiar with Hawaii, but again, I'm mainly focused and concerned with North Carolina. And here, our climate just won't allow these animals to survive, so environmental concerns here in North Carolina should not be a factor. So, let's focus on safety and let's focus on whether or not these animals are dangerous, whether or not these animals can be considered domesticated, and let's talk about how these animals are handled and maintained and what the Article 55 laws are in North Carolina. So, let's talk about Article 55 in North Carolina general statutes, just briefly. Um, I'm not reading this off a card, I'm citing what I know about the law off the top of my head and I'll discuss why it should be enough that counties and cities shouldn't regulate any further. So, Article 55, and I'm specifically referring to the part pertaining to pythons, says basically, again, off the top of my head, that permanent enclosures need to be locked and escape-proof. Transportation enclosures need to be escape-proof. There needs to be postings that say what is contained there, the escape plan, the owner's contact number, the species, um, you know, animal control information, things of that nature in case of escape, in case of emergency, in case of first aid, um, and I have those posted. Um, and the law also says that enclosures, in addition to being locked and escape-proof, they need to be labeled, like the permanent enclosures, uh, they need to be labeled with the common name, the scientific name, the quantity of animals within the enclosure, and then there needs to be owner information and contact information. So, if you look at that law and you break it down and you ask yourself, why isn't that law good enough or is that law good enough? Uh, pertaining to pythons, if the animal is in an escape-proof container, it can't escape, it can't harm the public, it can't do any damage. So, to me, I would argue that that law is sufficient, that there shouldn't be a need to further regulate the animals, that we shouldn't have a ban on the animals. According to Article 55, those animals can be kept safely. Now, in the Gifford case, again, he didn't obey the law. Part of that law that he violated was to notify authorities upon an escape or a release of the animal. Um, and again, that's in the law pertaining to pythons. So, if I were to have an escape here, I would have to notify the authorities. But, as long as the enclosures are locked and as long as the transportation containers are properly sealed and everything is done in accordance with law, we shouldn't have that problem. So, if everybody's complying with that law, really, why is there a need to ban or further regulate animals? And I understand that the Gifford situation occurred, but with Gifford, he broke the law and that problem is solved, that problem is fixed. Uh, if he's convicted, he'll probably never own another snake in his life. And if he's convicted and especially if he is penalized, that will serve as an example for other snake owners to comply with the law. So, the likelihood of seeing any further incidences is very, very low, especially and even if there's no further regulations and no further bans on these animals. But again, you guys need to see it to believe it. You guys want demonstrations, you want information, you want facts, not just my perspective, not just my argument. So, we'll get to that. Now, you've already seen this little girl in the video, let's look at some others just briefly to kinda give you an idea of what our fascination is with these pythons. Uh, for me personally, it's the color, pattern variations. I like to compare it to fish ownership and I've heard people often ask, why own fish? You can't touch them, you can't pet them, you can't cuddle with them. Well, that's kinda the thing about owning snakes like this, is that you kinda get the colors, you get the patterns, you get the beauty, but you can hold it. So, let's look at some other variations of this same exact species of snake. So, the one you just saw was a Sunfire Golden Child and it's an albino, so that's the reason why it had that coloration. I know that's genetics that you're not familiar with and probably don't care about, but to kinda show you another example of coloration and pattern, this is a Super Tiger. It's a little bit bigger than the one you just saw and I produced this here in my facility. And as you can see again, this is not an aggressive animal, this is not trying to attack me, this is not trying to kill me. These animals are all well-socialized by responsible breeders, so I try to hold these animals on a regular basis to make sure that they understand the difference between people, domesticated pets, and the animals that they're intended to eat, such as rats, mice, um, and maybe rabbits and things of that nature. This is another genetic variation, this is called an Albino Titanium Tiger. It may also have some other genetics in there, but when you start talking about genetics, it gets very complicated and sometimes a little difficult to see all the different genes that are in the snake. And this one is another female python that I've produced here, this is a Purple Albino. Normal Golden Child. Orange Glow Mottley. This is a Sunfire. And here we have an interesting pair of Machino Golden Childs that have some slightly different coloration from each other. I believe one of these has a added genetic gene, Platinum. And now you've seen some of the smaller stuff, so let's graduate up to some slightly larger pythons that might to you seem a little bit more intimidating. This is about a five to six foot, what's called a cow reticulated python. And again, as you can see, perfectly friendly, no danger, no hazard, no menace to society And this solid white beauty is a Super Phantom. And this is a Machino Mottley. All these last few pythons are roughly in the five to six foot range, so this gives you an idea of how large a five to six foot python is. Not much bigger than my thumb in diameter, definitely not big enough to hurt anybody. Now, to this point, you've seen a lot of baby pythons and yearling pythons. These are snakes that in no way, shape, or form can harm anybody in grabbing and holding and handling these animals and filming this. I have not been bitten, I have not been injured, there's no bite marks on my hands, I'm perfectly safe, my home is perfectly safe. Now, as the video progresses, we're gonna start looking at some much, much larger pythons. Now, keep in mind, as you're looking at this, that I have a collection that's very extensive, a lot of different genetics from a lot of different locations throughout the world. And this is what fascinates me about these animals, but my collection is approximately 150 to 200 animals if I went through and did a complete inventory and added it all up. And I'm able to maintain this practically by myself with no serious incidents, no injuries, no deaths, nothing in the media, I am doing everything responsibly in accordance with North Carolina laws. So, as you continue watching and you see much, much larger animals, bear in mind that this is being maintained in accordance with law that is good enough for North Carolina, it's good enough for Raleigh, and it's good enough for Wake County, and it's good enough really for the entire country. Now, just to further establish my credentials as somewhat of an expert, these are python eggs, proof that I am a breeder, that I do produce pythons and that I do hatch eggs and produce a lot of the babies that I've just shown you. And I'm showing you this to give you an idea of how large a python egg is. So, when you see these big females that I'm going to show you, you'll understand about what a large animal it takes to produce an egg this size and then this will kinda help you understand why the babies are the size that they are when they hatch. Generally speaking, these pythons can be upwards of two feet or more in length, fresh out of the eggs. So, what you're wanting to know and what you're wanting to see is, are these pythons dangerous? Are they gonna be a danger to the public? Clearly, as you can see again, this is another example of a python that is bigger than the pythons I've previously shown in this video. This particular male is over seven feet long. This particular male is over seven feet long. And you may not realize the strength of a snake. Maybe you think that a seven footer can kill somebody. Maybe you think that an eight footer, a nine footer, a 10 footer. You're probably wondering, where's the threshold that a python is actually a danger to the public? It's much bigger than this. You know, I am a grown man. This is a seven foot snake. This snake cannot harm me. Worst case scenario, it might be able to harm an infant. But the question we have to ask ourselves is, would it? And the answer is no. 99.999% of the time, an infant child would be safer with this snake than it would be with, say, a family dog. So one thing I want to talk about and discuss in this video are statistics, factual numbers, data concerning snake attacks and deaths and dog attacks and deaths. And I'll simplify this to one number. Deaths in the United States in the last 10 years. As a result of dog attacks and dog bites, we've lost 150 people to dogs in the last 10 years compared to just four deaths from pet snakes being handled in the last 10 years. Now, out of those 150 people that died from dog attacks, a lot of those were innocent bystanders, children, neighbors, friends, family. Out of the four people that died from pet snake attacks, all four of those people were killed by venomous snakes and all four of those people were the actual people handling the snakes. To my knowledge, do your own research, there has never been an innocent third party, a victim, a bystander, killed by a venomous snake in the United States. It's almost always, or to my knowledge, has always been, the person handling the snake. So is there really a danger to the public? My answer is no, based on the knowledge and the research that I've done. So consider that when you are considering regulating animals. Should you really be regulating snakes or should you take a look at dogs first? We all know that dogs are considered domesticated, excuse me, domesticated animals. Does this not seem domesticated to you? When I can reach into an enclosure, pick up an animal that does not threaten me, does not attack me, does that, could that meet the definition of domesticated? You have to realize and look at, the process of domestication was done by selective breeding through years and years of owners, breeders, working with dogs or other animals. And not only selectively breeding them for their physical appearances, their colors or their abilities, but also for their disposition, their demeanor, their temperament. And what you get from that are animals that are relatively calm, can easily be handled, and you could simply argue that they are domesticated. So I don't see any danger here. To continue proving my point, we will go on to the next size in python, something a little bit bigger than this guy. Okay, so this is Twitch. He is basically what I would say, an ambassador for reptile ownership. He is a diplomat. He is an exemplary example of a calm, peaceful animal that brings a lot of attention to the reptile hobby. This is a cow reticulated python. This is an adult male. He can get a little bit bigger than this. But because of his coloration and his demeanor, he's especially popular with a lot of friends and followers that I have on social media. And people just love to come see him. They love to hold him. They love to interact with him. And again, he's not dangerous. Now, this is an eight to nine foot snake. He eats large rats. And again, he is not a danger. I let children hold this snake on a regular basis. He's never offered to hurt me or anyone else. Now, while I'm on the subject, and it's worth noting, these are enclosures that I built. These are custom-built and these enclosures are all locked. So this is complying with state law in Article 55 of the North Carolina General Statutes. I also have labels on enclosures, so I am totally compliant. And if your people, if your local residents in Raleigh, Wake County, or in other states are doing what I'm doing, there's absolutely zero danger to the public, zero. Okay, so this is one of my largest breeding female pythons. You've seen smaller ones. You've seen how well they interact with me. Now let's look at a larger python and see how well they interact and see if there's a danger there. Now, if you're thinking this is a big snake and it shouldn't be owned by people, again, compare this animal to a large breed dog, such as rottweilers, pit bulls, mastiffs and great danes. And again, remember the numbers. 150 people killed by dogs compared to just four people killed by snakes. Yes, this animal could hurt me if it wanted to, but the question is, does she want to? Is that her personality? I've always said, and please remember, that each animal has its own personality. Not all snakes are bad. The only good snake is not a dead snake. Some of these snakes are just as gentle as your beloved family dog. What I'm going to do now is unlock this enclosure. Open it up for her and let her just come on out. I know this animal well enough to know that she's not going to bite me. She is big, but she's what I consider to be a gentle giant. She is not going to hurt me. She's not going to attack. And she wouldn't hurt you or anybody else. She's very curious and inquisitive. And she just wants to explore her surroundings. But there's absolutely no danger here. And when I'm done handling her, just simply show her the way back into her enclosure. Help her back in. And slide the door closed. And lock it without any danger. I've not been bitten. I've not been constricted. Anyone can do this with any level of education. I do recommend a little knowledge and experience, but if someone buys an animal that's a baby and they raise that baby and they know that baby into an adult like this, they'll understand its personality. They'll know how to interact with it. And again, this is something we can't regulate with any laws. This is human interaction with a gentle giant. Okay, so same big girl you just saw me get out of the enclosure and put back up. I brought her outside so you can sort of see her size. Now granted, there are bigger pythons than this, but if they have the same personality, size shouldn't matter. The reason I wanted to bring her outside was so you could see and understand and realize how slow these creatures move and how visible they are. So again, if we're talking about the risk or the danger to the public, this animal can be seen from a long ways away. It's very visible. Even if it had normal coloration and wasn't an albino, it would still be big enough for people to see it. So there's really no danger there. And this animal isn't threatening. It isn't trying to attack. And it's a very slow-moving animal. The only time this animal moves quickly is if it sees or smells food and is trying to eat something within a very, very close range. Then the animal might make an effort to try and move quickly to bite something. But this is not going to crawl around quickly like a black mamba or something else that would be moving across land very, very rapidly. Another thing worth noting is that there's almost less risk of a large python such as this escaping. The reason being, most snakes that do escape are able to find their way through very, very small, narrow cracks. Perhaps they crawl underneath the door or through a cracked window. This snake is not going to crawl through any cracks. This is a very, very large python. So it almost inhibits her ability to escape, making her much more safe to keep because she's less likely to get out. In closing, you can see that this is a safe animal to own. It is a pet. It is not threatening. It is not dangerous. Folks, it's just big. That's all. If you're going to make big snakes illegal, you might as well make horses and cows illegal or any other animal that's large, that's commonly kept livestock. You might as well make big dogs illegal. They're much more dangerous than snakes like this. All she wants to do is crawl around and be happy and be healthy. And she deserves respect. So as a hobby, we're asking that you please respect python ownership and allow python ownership to continue under the current North Carolina state laws under Article 55. I'm Rob Clark. Rob Clark Pythons. Thank you for your attention. Please contact me if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you.